I'd like to reopen the regular meeting of the Bronxville Board of Trustees for April 8th, 2024. And we are going to start the meeting with the...
Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, thank you. What would I do without you? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, trustee. I was excited about the swearing in of one of our trustees tonight and our justice, trustee Mary Taylor Behrens and Justice Natasha Nordal on their reelection. And congratulations to both of you. And I'm thrilled you're my colleagues and it's nice that remain forever. And they will be sworn in by our fellow colleague, Justice William Prims. So maybe start with Judge Nordal. And if you want to come up to the front.
We didn't get to do this the first time.
No, because of, yes, COVID.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Natasha Nordal, solemnly swear that I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as village justice.
My duties as village justice.
Of the Village of Bronxville.
The Village of Bronxville.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
And now we have trustee Mary Taylor Behrens.
Mary, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Mary Taylor Behrens.
I, Mary Taylor Behrens.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and uphold.
Will support and uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as village trustee.
My duties as village trustee.
Of the Village of Bronxville.
Of the Village of Bronxville.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I got so excited that was going to happen, I almost forgot the pledge. So congratulations to both of you. And it's an honor to be your colleagues. Helen, we're a little lean tonight. We have, Helen will be sworn in at probably our next meeting. But we do have our quorum. And just so people watching on television, anything that we're discussing tonight in the new business has been, gone over with all five trustees in work sessions. So we are presenting the views of all of us. Everyone's fully informed. It's just a coincidence that tonight both of them couldn't be here. But we will swear in Helen at a future date. All right. This is the meeting where we go through our annual appointments and annual actions, which must be read into the minutes. So I will start with Deputy Mayor Robert Underhill for term of one year. I will say, in the interest of brevity, all of the following are one-year terms. Village Clerk James Palmer. Village Treasurer, Receiver of Taxes Lori Boss. Deputy Village Treasurer Caitlin Fitzpatrick. Village Assessor Mark Heinbachel. Village Historian Ray Gesellbrot. Village Prosecutor Ronnie James Ritz. Registrar Dulce Angel. Deputy Registrar Mary Ann Magliato. Auditor to the Board of Trustees. Village Administrator for a one-year term for the purpose of reviewing and approving monthly abstracts of purchases as prepared by the Village Treasurer, Village Administrator/ Clerk. Auditor to the Justice Court Lori Boss, Village Treasurer. Village Auditor O'Connor Davies. Signatures. Section 1, checks drawn on the bank account at the Village of Bronxville may be signed by any two of the following.
Mayor, should we just go through and just approve all the individuals first and then approve the policies? Does that make more sense? Or, I don't know, we can do whatever you want.
It doesn't matter. Would you rather do, I can stop right there and we can do the people. Would you rather than go to the boards and committees? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, because that's all sort of people.
Sure, okay, no problem. Then we'll go to our boards and committees. The Finance Committee, Ann W. Porman and Heather Minor, each reappointed for a two-year term. To the Planning Board, Michael Goldman and James Hayden, reappointed for a two-year term. To the Design Review Committee, Patricia Knox, reappointed for a two-year term. To the Zoning Board of Appeals, Mary Ellen Sullivan Carpenter and Gregory Jackno, reappointed to a two-year term. The Ethics Board, Williams Slattery and Marilyn Woodhill, reappointed to a two-year term. And to the Library Board of Trustees, William Fulton and Charlotte Sullivan, newly appointed for a three-year term. And before I ask for a motion, just a huge thank you to these people. They share their time, their talents, their professionalism. They're just constantly stepping up. And we couldn't operate without the people that we mentioned. And I'd also like to say, if anybody listening wants to get involved in government, we'd love to have you self-nominate because I keep a running list and we call people and respect what their interest is, whether library, planning, zoning. So please, please get involved and a big thank you to those who continue to stay involved. So do I have a motion to approve the annual appointments of various individuals in the village?
So moved.
And a second.
Second, and I'll note that all of these are incumbents or reappointments except for...
The library.
Except for the library. So it's great to have the same team back.
And welcome to the new library trustees as well.
Absolutely.
All right, so...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. So now I will continue on annual actions versus annual appointments. And I will just go back to Section 1 on important signatures. Checks drawn on the bank accounts of the Village of Bronxville may be signed by any two of the following: mayor, deputy mayor, village administrator, treasurer, or deputy treasurer. Section 2, checks drawn on the account of the Justice Court of the Village of Bronxville. Established for deposit of fines, fees, and forfeited bail shall be signed by a village justice. Section 3, bank transfers and federal wire transfers to be signed by any two of the following: mayor, deputy mayor, village administrator, or treasurer. Procurement policy. For goods and services which are not subject to competitive bidding or purchased under state or county contract, the following methods of purchase will be used to assure the prudent and economical use of village funds. Estimated annual purchase contract amount $1,000 to $2,999. Price requirement to written or fax quotes. $3,000 to $19,999. Price requirement, three written or fax quotes or request for proposals, called RFPs. $20,000 and above. Price requirements subject to publicly advertised or request for proposals must be circulated to at least three companies. Contract must then be approved by mayor and board of trustees. A contract or purchase order must be signed by the village administrator after board of trustees' approval prior to order being made. Estimated annual public works contracts amount $1,000 to $4,999. Price quote requirement, two written or fax quotes. $5,000 to $34,999. Price requirements, three written or fax quotations or requests for proposals. $35,000 or more. Price quote requirement, subject to a publicly advertised bid or RFP, must be circulated to at least three companies. Contract must be approved by mayor and the board of trustees. A contract or purchase order must be signed by the village administrator after board of trustee approval prior to order being made. Bank depositories. Authorized depositories for village funds with JP Morgan Chase Bank, Webster Bank, M&amp;T Bank, and Westchester Bank. Surety bonds. That surety bonds be filed in the following amounts. All employees, $200,000 per loss premiums to be paid by village. Official newspaper. Designate the Journal News as the official newspaper for the Village of Bronxville until such time as the Village Board of Trustees determines otherwise. Publication of legal notices will appear there as required. Meeting date. Order of Business. Resolve that the regular meeting date of the Board of Trustees will be held at 7:00 p.m. on the second Monday of each month, excluding the month of August where there will be no meeting and holidays unless otherwise publicly noted and posted. Meetings subject to adopted rules of procedure, which were last amended in 2020. Mileage reimbursement, beginning on Jan. 1, 2023. The standard mileage rates for the use of a car, also vans, pickups, or panel trucks will be 67 cents per mile for business miles driven. And before I ask for a motion, there's just one caveat here. We have to use the Journal News. We would much prefer to use our online newspapers, but the State of New York will not let you use an electronic newspaper for notice. It has to be a written newspaper. So we have tried very hard. Assemblywoman Pollan has carried that banner for us, but she gets great pushback from the print media, shall we say.
Right, interesting on that, Mayor, for the public certification. It also, it has to have a paid circulation, paid circulation as well.
Oh.
As opposed to a weekly, limited circulation, no charge. So it's, these are all those little nuances that...
Yeah.
Yeah, so even though we publish all these notices in the paper and we try to send out emails, right, the legislature, I guess, will continue working on that one, but I think that, anyway.
It's no small amount of money because we have to publish every planning, zoning, I mean, and we'd much prefer to help out our local online paper, but we legally can't. That's sort of the...
Yep. So I'll move the approval of all and each of the annual actions previously enumerated by the mayor.
I'd like that, all right.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And again, a big thank you to everybody who steps up.
And if I could just make one more comment on that.
Yes, absolutely.
And of course, you explained the village's procurement policy. We do, for this, for this discussion, we summarize the procurement policy. A full copy of the village's procurement policy is of course available through the village treasurer's office, but these items are also consistent with the guidance in the general municipal law in terms of the public works threshold. The one other change that you will be considering tonight is when we last updated the procurement policy, which was in 2014, we do have a recommendation to add the use of credit cards and online transactions to the purchasing policy. And we'll cover that under, under new business. That was one of the pieces that the Controller's Office is trying to encourage municipalities to also do, recognizing that, fortunately, we have a very limited use of credit cards here compared to many communities, but anyway, just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to the mayor's report. And I'll be brief because that took a lot out of me. Oh. Congratulations to our chamber. They had a fabulous Easter egg hunt for the children. It was hugely successful and all merchants literally participated. And we have a wonderful new online thing called Chamber Chatter. And I encourage you to enroll by going to the Chamber of Commerce. It tells you everything, authors, sales, what designers coming to town. It's really brought the chamber up a complete notch. And it's called Chamber Chatter, and I think every resident would really enjoy it. We have been working with the school. The school's doing some incredible outdoor improvements. And the village trustees are talking among us about part of the improvement plan is to upgrade, frankly, some of the trees that are in extremely poor health, that are in the village's right-of-way, along Pond Field Road on the school side, and kind of make a beautiful alley of native trees. So we're talking amongst ourselves, and of course, since we, all five of us are not here tonight, we can't, you know, announce any commitment. But our commitment is, we are positively working with the school, trustee Behrens, and Village Administrator Palmer. And I went over and learned about the whole plan. And, you know, I'm thrilled for the school because honestly, even on this side of the street, we used to get calls saying the, the quality of the school, the beauty of the building, the exterior didn't rather meet the gravitas of the historical value. So all I can say is we're, we're partnering with our school in a very positive way.
As the mayor said, it's nine trees on Pond Field and two trees that wrap around on Midland.
Perfect, Mary, thank you.
That are contemplating being replaced with beautiful new trees. Half, the majority of those trees don't, they're not very green. Most of them are half-dead. They don't, they're not meant for the space, the small space that they're in. The plan would call for widening the space that where they planted, moving the sidewalk over closer to the new bushes that got, the new bushes that were planted, you might have seen if you drove by, that look beautiful. So they've got a whole plan in place to give the trees that we would be contributing to potentially, more space to be able to grow and have their roots and, and make a larger sidewalk for more, more people that are walking.
Perfect, thank you for, because that's important to know how many and what we're thinking. So it's, it's down Pond Field with a little wraparound of Midland.
Trees that wrap around toward, toward Midland. We haven't determined the exact number of trees yet that we will be putting in, but we'll be, the thought is that they'd be taking out those trees and replacing them with nice new, beautiful trees.
And they would all be native, not invasive? We've been working and they're, they're very sensitive to putting in things that are proper for the soil, the environment, the area. So also just to say, on Wednesday, April 24th, our Women's Club is celebrating its 99th anniversary. Talk about the word venerable. I was thinking of, and they're having a dinner, just special evening, lectures, et cetera. Tickets are still available, though not many, $125. And it's really to celebrate, you know, their wonderful existence. And I don't know if people know, their, their building is actually on the National Register of Historic Places. So, so anybody who wants to come out and celebrate the Women's Club, it's the 24th. And I'm going to end though, on a sad note, this past, just in this past couple of weeks, we lost two wonderful friends of the village. Michael Thix, who was a historian in Eastchester, and frankly, he was the gentleman who did so much work finding us all our veterans and honoring our veterans. When you ever saw our veterans' pictures in, in, you know, store windows, the Veterans' Parade, Michael, Michael took an interest in every veteran in the town. And, and it's just a huge loss because he was such a help for our Memorial Day Parade. And then our wonderful justice, George McInnes, his wife, Marlena, passed away. And Marlena was such a friend and partner to this village. She, she came to everything to support not only George, but support the, support the rest of us. So it's, it's two, two wonderful human beings who shared so much with the village. And just, I'd like just to take a moment to think of them. Okay, and then I think Jim Palmer will go on to your report.
Sure. Oh, yeah, please. Mayor, can I say a few words first?
I did, yes, I should ask either of you. Bill, I don't know where I'm going and I'm in such a hurry.
It's the eclipse.
Oh, it must be, or I must have a bus to catch or something. It's up, yeah.
It's the earthquake. The eclipse. Mayor had asked me to give an update on a few events happening in the police department. The chief couldn't be with us this evening, so I thought I would just fill the residents in. We're happy to welcome two new police officers to the force, Dimitri Gallard and Brandon Serrano, both whom joined the police department on March 25th. They were sworn, sworn in. And that, they were, they were, yeah. They both were previously police officers in New York City. They now are on their way to completing their in-service field training, and then they will be assigned to their own tour duty. So I'm sure that you'll be seeing them out and about in the village, and when you do, please say hi and introduce yourself. A ceremonial swearing in will take place at the village trustee meeting on June 10th at 7:00. And we're very excited to have them. Additionally, the police department published their 2023 annual report on March 15th. It was a comprehensive review of all the police events, training, staff, that, everything that happened in 2003. It's an excellent document. I encourage all the residents to read it. It was emailed via, it was emailed, if you had signed up for the alerts, on March 15th. And if you can't find it in your inbox, then it's definitely on our website under the police page. So I please encourage you to go visit it. Thank you, Mayor.
Perfect. Trustee Fredericks.
I think I'd just add to what trustee Behrens said by, first of all, thanking the chief and our new lieutenant, DeYoung and Ted Carroll, for their work in screening these candidates, particularly the chief, because it's an enormous amount of work to find the cream of the crop. And I think, speaking for all trustees, I think we, we are just so thankful to the work of, you know, the chief and his senior leadership team in screening the kinds of candidates we get. It's, it's a very important task, and I think we just feel lucky to have folks of this quality. And going back to the comment on the annual report, sort of the flip side of us getting raw talent and people with good experience is the village's commitment to offering really as much training as our officers can soak up, that that's good for the police and it's good for the community. Because in, in the end, the response to a situation or a crisis or just an ordinary police stop, preventing it from getting out of hand, is, is often a function of, of training. And, yeah, we try to give that to our, our police and, and, you know, again, I think that we all agree that that's very good value for money. And, you know, again, we just hope that everyone in, in the village has a chance to welcome some of these new police officers and, and respect the fact that, that we really think we're, that, that they're part of one of the best police departments in the state of New York, certainly the best village police department in the state of New York.
Thank you, Bill. All right, now I will go to Mr. Palmer.
Just very briefly, Mayor, happy spring, right? Officially a very nice, warm day. I understand tomorrow might even be warmer, so just wanted to...
And no rain tomorrow.
Right. Rain coming later in the week, but yes, no rain tomorrow.
No rain tomorrow.
So just wanted to take this opportunity again to remind everyone, right now, the use of gas-powered leaf blowers are permitted in the village for the course of the next couple of months. Of course, the village encourages the use of electric leaf blowers. And certainly, we encourage residents to inquire with their landscapers if they have electric leaf blowers, because of course, we will require that starting after May 15th through the summer and again throughout the winter. And also just wanted to mention that, of course, DPW is now going into their spring cleanup mode, so we appreciate everyone's patience just while they get out to Malpe Park, get out to Sagamore Park, the tennis courts. We've already had a lot of interest start to build in the tennis programs. And we do have our contractor lined up to restore the clay over the clay courts, but of course, the first thing we have to do is get the water turned on at these locations, and that requires coordinating with Viola, the water utility, and we are working with them. So just wanted to have everyone be mindful of that. So the DPW will be out doing this other work that they don't normally do over the course of the winter. And then just wanted to remind residents again, as we've been trying to beat this drum on asking everyone, as the foliage starts to come out real quick, which it will, now that we've had a couple of warm days, and then when we get the additional rain, to be mindful of any obstructions that plantings, hedges, shrubs that you have within the right-of-way that might have been planted there a long time ago, might not have been planted by you as the, as the homeowner or new homeowner. However, we want to make sure that the sidewalks remain accessible. We want to make sure there's no obstructions on the roadway, any of the stop signs. And it does not take long for that to happen. And while the village has been reaching out, we ask that you look at your own properties, especially those corner lots where hedges are in many cases above that height requirement that's identified in the village code, higher than 30, than three feet. And, and hedges that are well out beyond the 50-foot requirement that the village has. But whatever you can do, again, make sure that there's not obstructions, that motorists are clear, pedestrians are clear. And again, it will, we see it, just the foliage comes out real quick, and then the chief and I start driving around and I make notes and reach out to people. But if you could be mindful of that, that's all I wanted to mention.
Okay, then I move on to approval of three sets of minutes, a lot of minutes. The executive, the work session, and the regular meeting of March 11th. The special meeting we had of March 25th. And the budget workshop session of April 3rd. And again, thank you, Mary Ann. Lots of, lots of minutes, lots of detail. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And a second.
Second, as is our practice, I think we've made some minor edits, which Mary Ann has, so I think we're all good. Thank you, Mary Ann.
All right, so all in favor, subject to the minor edits?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. All right, and now we go on to our, I need a motion to open a public hearing for our 2024-2025 village budget.
So moved.
And a second. And a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Yeah. Counsel, was that impressive?
Unbelievable.
Yeah, unbelievable. I always forget my public hearing motion. Before I even start, it's a huge thank you to Lori Boss, our treasurer, and Jim Palmer, our village administrator. This is the kind of budget we get with everything detailed, right down to the penny. It's the most incredible document. I have showed it to my colleagues, and they are in awe of, of what we get because these two folks work just about every weekend from Valentine's Day on, it seems. So, so thank you so much. I know you both will want to comment, but is the, first of all, is the proposed budget up on the website?
It is.
Okay. But just for the audience, the tax rate increase proposed is 1.68%, which translates into an increase of $61 for every million dollars in assessed value. I think that's kind of, just drives it home. The big drivers this year were an increase in workman's comp of $300,000 and an increase to health insurance costs of $275,000. And this was combined with what's happening nationwide, a softening of sales tax revenues. So we had to look at a little revenue drop. And we also have bond anticipation notes to deal with $400, $4.5 million, correct, James?
Yes, one-year bond anticipation.
Notes, and to deal with capital projects flooding being one of the big ones. And when you look at the budget book, basically, our appropriations are up 3.96%, which essentially correlates with inflation. And we decided, we open it for public comment tonight, for anyone who's here, but anyone listening, we will take any comment on the budget up until the 17th, because we have to refine it, and it has to be presented in Albany by the 1st of May. And, and we do things on time here. So, so we welcome any comments up until the 17th. And any other thoughts on the budget from anyone else? I just thought I'd give a thumbnail sketch of how it is, why, what the drivers were, and what, what it means. And again, it's $61 for every million dollars in valuation.
Jim, just for residents, what's the preferred method for you to collect comments? Do they go to, to your email?
To email, please, yes. They can, they can send it to jpalmer@vobny.com. And, and to the mayor's point, yes, the budget documents, all the individual budget documents, the expense detail, the expense summary, the overall summary, my narrative, all that is available on the village website under the Village Treasurers page. And in addition, of course, broadcasting this meeting on our Verizon and cable channels, we do also make it available on YouTube, so residents can see that. But yes, someone can always email me, and of course, you can always call me directly with, with any questions that you may have.
And, and just so people know, when they go to Jim, Jim will forward them to all the members of, of the board, so we'll, we'll all see them.
Okay. And this is the opportunity for anyone here tonight who wants to talk about the public hearing, i.e. the budget. I see our library board president here, Margaret Major, welcome.
Hello. Hello, yes, Margaret Major. And I just, I wanted to just say a few words about the library budget. And so this year, the library is, has asked for a 3, a 3.7% increase. And then after a bit of discussion with, with Jim, we actually settled right around 4%. And just to remind you, we do have contractual obligations to our union that accounts for, you know, a good piece of that, as well as, you know, the various healthcare benefits and things that we don't control. So I think our total increase that we're asking for is around $75,000. So year over year, on a 1.7 million dollar budget. So it's not that much. So I just, I wanted to point out that our library director, Greg Wazilla, is an excellent budget manager and, and tries to come in under budget every year so that we can build up some reserves for capital projects, which is a second point that I wanted to bring up, is that the library is now 20, over 20 years into its tenure post the last major renovation of the interior of the library. So, and that happened when the, when the child's painting was sold, and the expansion of the library happened in 2000. So it's actually more like 24 years. And so now what's happening is that inside the library, everything is aging out at the same time, and that we are going to need some capital dollars for the library over the next few years. We've put together a short and longer-term plan of the various projects that we've identified that the library needs. The first one that we'd like to tackle in this upcoming budget year is an improvement of our staff workroom, which is located right behind the circulation desk. It's a bit of a disaster, and it really needs some attention, has holes in the floor, things are falling off the windows. So it, so I'm just bringing this to your attention so that you know, as you have further discussions about the library, that, you know, we have some, some needs. And that next year, we'd like to address the children's room, the Jaeger room, all of these public rooms are, you know, in need of, of updating. Okay, so that's it on the budget for the library. I also wanted to say thank, oh, I can wait for the public comments, but I'll say it now. Thank you for welcoming our new trustees, the two that we're bringing on. One, Charlotte Sullivan, was on The Friends for three years, and now she's coming over onto the trustees. She has a background as an attorney and a wonderful volunteer, and we're happy to have her join us. I also want to say that we have two trustees rolling off who served for six years or more. That's Kevin Charlton and Bob Shear, so we should thank them for their service. They've been wonderful library trustees. And last but not least, I wanted to invite all of you to come to the Friends of the, Friends of the Bronxville Library Party on April 19th. So I hope we'll see all of you there. And maybe I should say, last, last but not least, the patio is coming along very nicely. If you have a chance, go over and check it out. It looks amazing. It's going to be a wonderful new addition to the community and the library. And we're still targeting June 1st approximately for completion, and I haven't heard anything that changes that, so it looks like we're on track to meet that goal. So, and the fundraising by the Friends has just been outstanding. So one other small comment to add is that the Friends will also help in future renovations in, in, in the library, but they're not really in a position to do it for the workroom. So, but anyway, so the Friends have just been fantastic. So thank you to them. Thank you to all of you for everything you do.
Thank you. And I, I knew you were going to mention the library events, so that's what, I saved it for you, but I hope everyone can come and support our library. And thank you for mentioning Bob and Kevin's service. That was, sure, absolutely.
It's a small thing, but it's not a small thing. And that's that, I just wanted also to make sure that you're aware that the contract will be renewed with our union employees in 2025. So we'll be doing negotiation with them, maybe starting as soon as this fall, but certainly in the spring of '25. So, just so you know.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret, and thank you for your service. Thank you. You're a great advocate and a great leader, so thank you. All right. Any other? So I'm going to leave the hearing open, correct, counsel?
I think you can adjourn the public hearing to, what did you say, the 17th?
Seventeen.
Well, well, we could. Another suggestion is they could close it to, close it for public comment, but keep it open for written comment through the, through the 17th.
Sure.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close it for this evening's public comment?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. With the caveat, it is open for written comment until April 17th.
Mayor, is it okay if maybe we just give a couple of the comments on the budget?
Absolutely.
You know, just for the, the public certification. And again, as, as the mayor mentioned, all the tabs are, for the 24-25 budget, are available on the Treasurers page on the website. And for that matter, you can also see any prior year budgets, as well as any past year financial statements. The mayor highlighted the tax rate increase of 1.8, 1.68%. And again, that was off of a, a budget with a total appropriations of this year of $20,363,95. And again, as the mayor mentioned, that's up 3.96%.
Right.
Perhaps also worth mentioning is that, that, that increase does also include increase in the complement of the Police Department to a total of 25 budgeted positions from the current 23 budgeted positions. The revenues come in at, the non-real property tax revenues come in at $6,752,203. And again, those are stable, as been the board's practice. We keep those numbers somewhat conservative. The mayor mentioned a slight pullback in the sales tax revenue, so we've kept the sales tax revenue a little bit conservative. But our other traditional revenue sources, parking permits, et cetera, those post-pandemic have returned nicely. And then, of course, once again, we are using some of the unassigned fund balance of $700, of $700,000. And that results in a levy of $12,647,792. And what might be worth explaining also to the public, although I think all the residents know, is working backwards, the village tax bills go out on June 1st, and pursuant to village law, the first payment is due by the end of June, and then the second payment is due by the end of December. So residents have the opportunity of paying in those two installments. The Village of Bronxville is unique, and then I think we're the only non-co-terminous village that issues one tax bill that also has the town amount on the tax bill. And the village levy of the $12,647,792 represents approximately 20%, depending where the school comes in, of the total, of the total levy amount. I think the school generally, the levy comes in somewhere in the range of 40 million, I'm not sure, but of course, the, the residents vote on that, but I just, I just wanted to mention that. As our library board president mentioned, that, that budget of the, that levy amount of the $12,647,000 includes a contribution of $1,645,000 to the wonderful library that we have across the village. So just wanted to mention that. And, and the village's taxable value this year, as explained in a, in a chart, is up some $165 million, or approximately 3%, bringing the village's total taxable value to almost 3.5 billion. So that's been a continued real positive trend. And as probably some of you know from looking at the assessment changes, that that's actually, for the first time in quite some time, a little less than 100%, given that the state actually determined that the values in the village were actually a little higher than what the assessor has even valued them at. But the assessors, that'll be reevaluated for the next year. So, sorry, I just wanted to mention some of those other pieces. And again, if you go to the Village Treasurers page, we do break down all those different categories, including a summary of the library, a sum, a past history of expenses and revenues. And at the end of the day, appropriations a 3.96% increase, given that inflation, as measured by the New York State Department of Labor, is more than double that. The village, once again, tried to, tried to keep it as lean as possible. But some items obviously are, are growing up, including our contractual obligations that we have. I just wanted to say, too, I really appreciate all the work of all the staff, and we just have a, we just have a great team, and it takes all of us working together to, to put that together. But Lori, our treasurer, really does put in an awful lot of the evenings and works every weekend, and certainly in the spring. So as Mary Ann knows, we start to get a little punchy. But anyway, I just wanted, and of course, I just wanted to thank all of you always for being so supportive. And, and the board did have a work session on this last week and did dive into more of those, more of those details. And, you know, that's all I just wanted to mention.
Okay. And I think just two other points. We have to wait to send the tax bill, obviously, until the school budget is approved by the pub, public. So some people wonder why it seems tight that we wait so long to send the bill out, but we can't send the bill out till the school budget is approved. And also, when you are in danger of missing a payment, we actually call people because the penalties in New York are quite, quite severe, but they're state-mandated, they're not Bronxville-mandated. And we're not looking to make money off of people missing tax deadlines, but the amount of penalty is, is directed from the state of New York.
Right, 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 regardless of, right, regardless of whether, unfortunately, whether or not a taxpayer gets a tax bill, as the mayor explained, you are responsible for that obligation. So somehow we, even though when someone closes, attorneys should be conveying what that process is. But yes, I will say the treasurer's office goes out of their way with calling, emailing, calling again, trying to track people down, so.
Okay. So then we're set on the public hearing. We'll go to new business. And Mr. Palmer, you mentioned the procurement policy changes. So if you just want to basically reiterate what we're voting on?
Yes, and I don't know if, I don't know if we have the procurement, the full procurement policy on the village website and the Treasurers page, but we can certainly, we can certainly put it there. But the, the resolution before you is to simply adopt the procurement to policy as amended, and it's being amended to include our incorporating the use of credit card purchases and online purchasing into our policy. The policy was last adopted in 2014. And again, as I said, we follow the guidance of the Controller's Office. And the general municipal law sets the standard for which time public works contracts, you have to bid over 30, over $35,000. It sets the standard for non-public, non-public works items, but some of the other items are a little bit more discretionary when it comes into estimates, and there are certain items that are exempt. But most importantly, the change is having internal controls for the use of credit card transactions. Employees just can't open up a credit card account. So again, all those credit card purchases have to be done in conjunction with the village's procurement policy. No purchase of person, personal items are permitted. For example, a village employee can't just start purchasing items and then reimbursing the village. Just important clarifications. No person shall apply for a store online account, except as approved by the village administrator at the request of the appropriate department head. Village administrator, for the purposes of facilitating department purchases, may authorize certain employees to be issued credit cards under a village MasterCard account, which we keep track of. So just some of the details that goes into the policy itself.
Okay. So do I have a motion to update the policy?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. The next one is authorizing purchase and installation pedestrian traffic signal at Midland and Tanglewild. The background on this is we currently have a signalization there. It's old. We have to repair it much too frequently. So we went out and got a bid for a new LED pedestrian traffic signal, which will be And this is just to kind of continue our goal of walkability, and this was just something that was, repairing made no sense. that was, repairing made no sense. It was time to buy a new LED pedestrian signal. So trustees know about it, but I wanted to share with the public. So do I have a motion to accept Verdi Electric's bid of $23,060?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, and really exciting is not even the word, but we're going to ratify a stipulation and agreement with our police department. And I tell you, my entire career here, we have the most professional collegial relationship on every level with our police department, and we are so fortunate. I mean, in my time, even when things get tough, and, you know, they say the best labor agreement is when both sides gave away too much, and that's how they feel. And I think we get great agreements. And we got a four-year agreement with our police officers for a 2% annual raise increase with some minor adjustments to retirement healthcare policy in particular. But it was done just incredibly collegial and seamlessly. So I think we're, I mean, we have colleagues who we love and appreciate, who are six years behind on police agreements that, so we're fortunate enough to have the police officers and our in-house bargaining team. So I would love a motion to accept the ratification of this agreement.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All right, motion passes. Mr. Palmer, would you like to purchase some new trucks, plows, and spreaders?
Yes.
Or just one?
Just, just one.
Truck plow spreader. Yeah, yeah, you're right. I put an and in there.
Just one. The total purchase for this vehicle is $126,44. And as you will, as you may recall, we sold at surplus, at a great value, our large 15-yard dump truck, which was too tight for the hilltop, was used too infrequently, was taking up too much space. So we sold that vehicle, which was in a reasonable condition while we, while we could, and we're purchasing the smaller vehicle. And these monies were also available through previous debt service, utilizing some monies that we had from some other vehicle monies that were available to us, I think, from one of the garbage trucks. So again, money was, money was already in place. However, it's slightly smaller vehicle to accommodate our current needs and to be able to use more frequently, including perhaps for topsoil in the summer, et cetera.
All right, I will move that to purchase the one vehicle. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And our next motion is to authorize the planning board to review seasonal on-street dining site applications. This all came about, as you know, a little history, obviously, during COVID, our restaurants needed outdoor dining to exist. And we worked with them, let them put out what they felt they needed in the exigent circumstances, and now we're trying to bring some, some balance, that everybody is on their feet. And we're basically also trying to honor the incredible partnership that the non-food merchants, I mean, there were other communities that had to just take down all their outdoor dining because their non-food chamber members just were so unhappy with the, what it limits on parking. So we brought in a consultant because the five of us knew between us, we didn't have any expertise on outdoor dining, and they set up some aesthetic guidelines, some spatial guidelines. There'll be, frankly, things will probably shrink about one half. Is that, that's kind of fair. But they now have to meet certain standards of safety, attractiveness, and...
Cleansliness.
Cleansliness, excellent. And so this is something that everyone has recommended, that it's in the purview of our planning board, because our planning board currently decides on sidewalk dining. In the old days, remember, we had just the tables outside, so it made sense that the same governing bodies would look at the application. So, Mr. Palmer, you might want to amplify, because you have really worked so hard on this, but that's the gist of, and I'll tell you, everybody in our business district understands the balance that's needed now post-COVID, and we've gotten an awful lot of good buy-in. I would say thanks to everybody being aware of what we're trying to accomplish.
No, and I think you explained it perfectly. That makes absolute sense, since the planning board approves site plans, and they've been approving sidewalk dining, and some of these establishments that are requesting permission to continue with the seasonal dining that you set in place for April to November, also have the sidewalk dining, and those two do need to be looked at together. And the wonderful piece is that the planning board will have the design standards as an excellent guidance tool. I've been communicating with all the six merchants already. Again, for this year, we're only, for the '24 program year, allowing the existing six dining establishments that currently occupy portions of the street to continue to do so. But the theme has also been, from the village board, that yes, the size of these establishments need to be essentially reduced by approximately half. And the reason for that is, again, I think the board followed a very methodical process with the consultant, including providing a survey to residents, and people like them. They appreciate the outdoor dining. What they didn't like were the challenges of the taking away additional spaces that resulted in double parking, triple parking in some locations. They didn't like the additional refuse, they didn't like some of the additional noise that was coming from the establishments. So the goal is to, again, provide that balancing aspect, and the planning board has great expertise in looking at sites holistically. I'll be in attendance, so they now have a special meeting. The planning board has been great to accommodate a special meeting for these applicants next Tuesday. I'll be in attendance to that. All the complete applications will be going out tomorrow. I'm going to take one more look, but again, we've been providing the guidance to all the merchants to follow certain standards, including even eliminating many of the concrete blocks and going with a certified bottler that would be more attractive. So again, a lot of aspects of trying to balance, but the board has been communicating with all the merchants and guiding them along the way. I think we've already done much more than what many other communities did, and it's been transitional. The board even allowed them, the existing establishments, to be up over the winter, probably to the chagrin of some, but again, recognizing that, anyway, they were an absolute...
It's their livelihood.
Absolutely, yep. And I, and again, even as the restaurants come in, they realize that, look, anything they can get is something, but residents seem to actually enjoy that vibe. So it's finding that right, that right balance and something that's attractive and akin to Bronxville standards.
And as a reminder, if a restaurant does have on-street dining, they're paying the meter fee.
Yes.
Which is $11 per day, per meter.
Right, right, they're paying for the full price of those spots and substantial, and a substantial site plan fee, you know, but in conjunction with the budget. Last year, we did allocate, it's important the public knows, $100,000 toward police overtime to man the scope of those full-size establishments on-street. And we've taken that out of the budget this year because the chief of police is confident with smaller-size establishments, that we can keep traffic moving safely.
Yeah, there were a lot of great things about the big dining places, but there were, there were negatives, and we're trying to, we're trying to find the balance. So, all right, I will move it to authorize the planning board to review seasonal on-street dining.
And I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And finally, our last, it's more of a proclamation than a resolution, recognizing Arbor Day as April 26th. And I know the Giving Garden, there's going to be a bunch of young children going over to plant things, and hopefully, we'll be planting trees somewhere.
We're gonna, well, I think, right, and in conjunction with the tree, the school project, there'll definitely be a commemorative tree planting, I am sure, via the 26th out at the, out at the school. So lots of tree plantings, but we'll definitely get an opportunity there.
So this is, is an easy one, is anyone against Arbor Day? I'll move Arbor Day. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
We all want a second.
We all want a second, yes. All righty. That concludes the general business trustees. Anything we might have forgotten in the course of, no? And then this opens it to the public for comment on any topic. All right, seeing none, then I need a motion. And when do we meet again? I always forget our date, so I can just mention the May date.
It'll be the 13th, May, yep, Monday, May 13th.
Monday, May 13th, all right. So do I have a motion to adjourn till Monday, May 13th?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All right, everyone, have a good evening.